No, I haven't.
Yeah.
Let me ask Ms. Langmay if you could step forward. The very first question I have, what is the total budget for the city clerk? For staffing? Anybody who can answer that one?
My apologies, Glenn Robinson. What was the question, sir?
What's the total budget for staffing at the city clerk?
For the whole department?
Mm-hmm.
About 9.4 million.
9.4 million?
Right. And then during election years, we get one-year allocations of resources for the municipal election, which is a, thank you, a considerably larger amount. It's about an additional $15 or $16 million to run the municipal election. And then when that year is completed, any available funds revert back to the general fund and we go back to our normal budget.
Has the CIO arrived? You're the CIO, okay. I wasn't sure. The mayor proposed 10% cut across the board for most departments, or all departments, I don't remember, but it affects the city clerk's office. Was that 10% cut?
Council members, your question, did the cut apply to the election division positions specifically?
Okay, let's ask it that way.
Yeah. As far as I know, I would have to defer to the clerk because unfortunately I'm on the neighborhood empowerment side, not the clerk's side. As far as I know, I don't think it would apply to the--
Can I ask the CLA if you could track that information down while we're waiting? I really want to get a sense of--
Hollywall cut with the city clerk, the election division was not cut. However, the city clerk sustained almost a 30% cut.
In what?
I'm sorry?
The 30% cut in--
Overall. The entire city clerk budget.
Without cutting, oh, I see, I see. So you absorb the cuts outside of the election division?
Correct.
And the total budget for the election division is, you said for staffing was somewhere between 9 million and 25 million?
Just the election division staffing is 25 full-time employees. And the total salary accounts for the '09-10 budget proposed is 8.4 million.
And the original proposal for the neighborhood council elections, this is what I'm finding amazing here. The original budget for the elections for neighborhood council was 4.9 million, and your total budget, it would be a 20% increase.
Right, I believe that--
At maximum capacity on an election year.
Yeah, I believe that the intent of that initial submission was to gain the widest possible avenue of--
In the worst budget year--
It was formulated prior to, we formulate this way back in October, so, yes, you're right. The intent--
The CIO cut it down to 4 million, thank you. Wow. Good morning.
Good morning.
So then the CIO cut it down to 4 million with negotiations with the CIO and the mayor's office.
That is correct.
But it still represents a 20% increase.
And then upon further review and discretion with the CIO and the council office, we discussed the level of outreach that the department was going to perform, and it was determined that that level of outreach would not be necessary in the neighborhood council election. And so we've eliminated two large pieces out of that 4-million-dollar allocation, original budget proposal. One was a generic mailing to all U.S. postal customers in L.A. to notify them on the neighborhood council program and prospective dates, et cetera. And then a more specific mailing that indicated who the candidates were and vote-by-mail information. Those two elements were 1.1 million, of which we have reduced that amount.
Okay, now, what is-- And that amount did not affect the $398,000 in salary augmentations that we provided for you two years ago for the election, for this process?
Correct. It's over and above that amount.
The original cost estimate was 1.3 million.
And I believe that that original estimate that was assembled, that 1.3 million was over and above that 398 amount as well.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. It was part and parcel of it because the money moved from the neighborhood council system into the city clerk's office.
Council member, if I could, cherry-sour with the CIO staff, if I could sort of provide some background, since I was involved in the transfer, my staff wrote the report on the transfer of neighborhood council elections from Dunn to the clerk. At the time at which the council appropriated the money in 2007, that was basically an estimate worked out between our office and the clerk with input from Dunn. We transferred based on no experience by the clerk. At that time, Mr. Martinez, the city clerk, looking at the experience, estimated that probably to continue the outreach or to continue the neighborhood council elections would be approximately 1.3. But the CIO report at that time also indicated that the ongoing staff costs for the five positions transferred would be approximately $380,000. Now, it was assumed that those positions in off--
As a part of the 1.3, right?
No, not as a part of the 1.3.
Why is that?
Because those positions, it was assumed that in off-years, when there would be no neighborhood council elections, those positions would be assigned, would be part of election division, they would assist in the conducting of the neighborhood council or of the municipal elections, and those costs would be partially offset by charges to the other jurisdictions that we partner with in the elections. And so it was, at that point, it was a deal brokered with the city clerk, sort of a win-win situation. It was supposed--
It was a deal brokered with me.
Well, when we wrote the report, it was assumed that there would be a transfer, that the city clerk would get the additional positions to use in--
Let's understand, let's be clear. You may be the CIO, but I wrote the motion. And I know what my intent was. And when I asked what was included in the 1.3, it included the staffing.
Mr. Chairman, all I can speak to is the report that our office prepared, which said clearly that 380,000 would be an ongoing cost, and I believe that the clerk--
No question about it, but it would come out of the 1.3.
What our intent was, is that in the next budget year, there would be no funding for neighborhood and council elections. And it was clear, it was an estimate at the time that what's included in the proposed budget for the current year is based on actual experience. And while the clerk has lowered its numbers, I don't think anyone went back and said it was only going to be 1.5, 1.3. I don't think there was any sense that, you know, those numbers were set in stone.
I'm telling you, as the maker of the motion, as the chairman of the committee, as the person who negotiated with Frank Martinez directly, it was a hard 1.3. I'm stunned that the CIO has offered a budget that is triple what the original estimate was. $4 million, not including the ongoing staffing.
Mr. Chairman--
All right, quadrupling.
Mr. Chairman, our budgets are put together with input from the department and based on information provided by--
Well, I'm not any more pleased with the department in this case. I'm not any more pleased, so that's not going to defer my angst. But I'm telling you, the CIO should have caught this. A lot of money. It's interesting to me that the salaries as needed is exactly equivalent to the amount we thought it was going to cost, ongoing, 1.3 rounded up. Then we have overtime of about half a million dollars. And now, the election expenses, those we expected to go up because you multiplied the elections by 22. Or you conducted the elections for 22, and there's 90 councils, so obviously those expenses would be increased. But I don't understand the increased allocations for staffing of salary as needed and salaries overtime of 1.7 million dollars.
Council member, may I address that? The CIO put together this spreadsheet, which I believe you might have--
That's what I'm looking at.
In reviewing the prior report to move the neighborhood council election program over to the city clerk, in column one, you see interim appropriation for '07-'08. There was a total appropriation of $638,000 for 31 neighborhood council elections. That was the original budget that was approved in that committee report. And now that we have three times that many, about 95 neighborhood councils, if we took that originally approved budgeted amount and we multiply that times three, then that would be almost 1.9 million. So in a way, it does coincide with that original budget. That was a attachment to--
So 1.9 million is fine with you?
Um, it's up to you, sir.
Okay, so let's take the 1.9 figure, okay? Because 1.9 minus the 400,000 for staffing is 1.5. Is that fine?
Mr. Chairman--
Is that fine with you? Because that's still about 700,000 less than what you're proposing now.
I think what we need to look at is, what does it exactly cost to put on these elections in 2010?
That's exactly what I'm trying to do.
Okay, so if that is--
But I'm also doing it in the context of the worst economy in our lifetimes and in a declared, at least in the mayor's eyes, a declared emergency.
Understood. So let's look at that. Let's look at what it costs to put on the election in 2010. We, in our professional opinion, put forward a very complete package, which included two sets of outreach, vote-by-mail, off-the-shelf system software. Upon request of the council, we have cut down, we have cut down, we have cut down. There will be no longer two outreach mailings. We will do our systems, software in-house. But again, we cannot, we would like to, but we cannot afford to justify the figure that was quoted as 1.3. What we are faced with today is what it's going to cost to put on the election in 2010, as we have been instructed to do by the council. We now have a package of about 2.2, which keeps back some funds for some vote-by-mail, which the city attorney has advised, is highly advisable that we at least have some funds available for seniors, disabled, and those that are not able to vote. But we have cut out outreach, we have cut out bot software. This is the absolute minimum that we would require to put on the election in 2010. I regret that it is the amount that it is, but if the city council wishes us to stand behind this election and say that we are doing it in the professional way that our election systems can do, this would be the cost. If you wish us to delete any section, we will comply, but we simply are letting you know--
I don't buy it, Dune. Look, your salaries as needed have increased by six times. Six times. And it was intended for 31 elections, you conducted 22. But even at 22, which would be four and a half times, you're six times more than your original budget. The actual expenditures were 198,000, so you're 20,000 short. So it's five times more in salaries as needed. Five times more.
Based on experience of our 22 elections?
No. If it were based on your experience, it would be four times more. So I'm not buying it. Not to mention, the overtime budget has gone from 81,000 in original expenses, the actual, I don't know why there was so much overtime in the other election. I don't remember, I don't remember any discussion about this in your closeout report to this committee. And there was, what angers me more than anything else is that when we did the closeout report, nobody mentioned any future request that was going to triple or quadruple the city clerk's budget for these elections. That's unconscionable. I don't know who was responsible for that, but somebody needs to go back and review who the hell wrote that report and didn't tell us that we were going to have to quadruple the expenses. So if you're wondering why we're here, the day of the budget, it's because this department was irresponsible with the reporting to this committee. And I believe, far exceeding what should be considered in this budget crisis. So I don't understand why we should give anything on the salaries as needed. I'm still not getting a clear answer why that has increased by six, six times.
The reason why it's not a proportional increase from the pilot project is because of the difference in the time available, for one. The pilot project was not an ideal--
Excuse me, could you please identify yourself first? Thank you.
Oh, Arlene Taylor, Election Division. Was not an ideal process by any means. We were scrambling. We did the best we could at the time. It took a lot of overtime from permanent staff. We had hired 20 as needed. We determined that was insufficient in terms of being able to support the elections. So what you should see in our budget request is an increase in planned staff hours and a lowered reliance on overtime. Some overtime is necessary because a lot of the work, the election days, the weekends, and the stakeholders--
You more than quadrupled it from the original calculation.
But proportionately, there's more reliance on straight time versus the overtime.
Okay, what this budget doesn't reflect, or what your proposal does not reflect, is the 398,000 that is now in your budget. I'm not even talking about that. In 2007, 2008, the actual expenses for 22 elections for those, I believe it's five positions, was 88,000. And you've grown that to 398,000. Where's all that staff work?
Yeah, that, council member, that was, the 88,000 represented three months' funding during that year. That's what that--
I'm saying, well, with 398, you're going to get four times the staff work.
Right.
Where's that work?
Right. And we're going to be, instead of using them for only three months, we're going, we're going to be using them for five or seven months. And--
No, they need to use them for 12 months. And they need to be doing the work that is supposed to be done by all these other salaries that need it.
Mr. Chairman, the numbers, the 383 and the 88 are dollars that are in the city clerk's base budget.
I know that. I know that. I know how this budget works. But I'm not getting an answer, where's the work?
Yeah. The five positions will be devoted to conducting the neighborhood councils throughout the whole year. Actually, there's some slots prior to fiscal year and after.
Okay, so that should equate to four times the amount of work than they did the last time?
Yes, it will. Because we're going--
But notwithstanding the fact that they're able to do four times the amount of work, you're still asking for six times the amount of salaries as needed.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. And the reason for that is, again, because the process that we followed for the 22 elections had a lot of room for improvement, and that's what we're moving towards.
Exactly. That's why we dedicated five full-time staff members.
Right. So the bulk of the as-needed staff are going to be assisting us in the canvas of the ballots, in preparation of the ballots, because we found that's where there was the most, well, that was the most challenging area. The balloting is very complicated. We made errors. We caught most of them in time, but we see that as the greatest threat to the conduct of the election. So that's where we wanted to focus our attention.
Councilman, if I may, we do have a worksheet that lays out the year's worth of work involved in putting on the election. I think it would be helpful for you just to see it, if I could pass it up.
Sure. So there are five coordinators, as I understand it. Is that correct?
One senior and four project coordinators, yeah.
Okay, one senior, four project coordinators. Are they, is the system divided into four or five?
For the most part, it's four, with just a few special cases handled by the senior.
Okay, so then, four people, one person is handling how many neighborhood councils?
Roughly four. Roughly four, so that would be 23.
2.5?
Yeah.
With the senior taking some. Okay, the neighborhood council meetings to develop policy stipulation, all that stuff that people tell me don't really do anything. How many of those meetings have to be conducted?
I'm sorry?
These first meetings here, neighborhood council EDG meetings, I don't know what that is, to develop the--
Election Development Group, I believe. Those are done. So we've met several times and discussed various policies--
Oh, those are already done?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
There's a portion of that that's pre-fiscal year. They're just grouped together?
Yeah, really? Okay, so there should be no cost related to that, right? And all that stuff is done?
Or being done. We just did the random alpha this past weekend.
You did what?
Oh, no, we can--
Random alpha, right?
So this past weekend, I'm sorry, was--
It's not relative to this budget proposal?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other than, it's just work that needs to be done.
Begin recruiting neighborhood council election polling places. What does it mean recruiting? How long does that take?
So basically, we'll have staff going out to survey each--
Can't the neighborhood councils find the place?
Well, that's what we tried with the 22, but we found that to be problematic. I mean, we will take suggestions--
In what way? In what way? I don't remember this coming up in the report, by the way, but what way is it problematic?
Yeah. So the worst example was Lincoln Heights, where there was a lot of controversy about the use of that--
I remember Lincoln Heights being controversial, but I remember it was very unique.
It was the polling place that lended to it, yeah.
It was very unique.
Yes. So situations--
So let's do this for them and let the other neighborhood councils handle it.
Well, and Porter Ranch was a problem. They wouldn't let us extend the hours we needed to complete the canvas. They were very expensive. They--
There was no immediate accessible elevator, and it was on the second floor. It all had to be--
There were some ADA issues. But, so what we wanted to do was to start with where the neighborhood councils had used facilities previously, but actually go out and do a survey, as we do with our municipal election polling places, where we look for ADA access and we look for physical barriers or other types of barriers.
How many--
And then we were going to come back with, you know, three to five for the neighborhood councils to consider, and then we'd select.
You know, I know you guys want to do, like I said, a Cadillac.
I know.
We can't do a Cadillac. You know, hold neighborhood council election information meetings in the regions. You know, one, it's like 90. So one meeting, you got five people, that's 10 meetings--
Well, it's more than five--
In July, in August.
Yeah.
I mean, why do you have so many meetings?
Because we have to meet with each of the neighborhood councils to finalize their election procedures. And you have to do that one-on-one.
You have to what?
That is something that needs to be done on an individual basis because each one's so different.
What does it mean, test candidate filing ballot design?
No, we're developing an in-house system that's going to, what we found with the pilot project with the 22 is that it can get very confusing when we're doing candidate filing in terms of eligibility and which offices people want to run for, especially because there's the withdrawal process and then they can file for another. So we wanted to develop an application that would kind of streamline and improve that process, and ideally then feed into the ballot layout process, which would then feed into the tally process. That was the system. Originally, we had hoped to be able to procure because there are systems, you know, election systems that do that. But at this point, they're trying to develop that in-house.
Now, the 398,000, this represents, I've been told in this committee, five bodies? Okay, can you describe those positions to me?
The five bodies are--
It's the, it's the senior and the two coordinators. What is their civil service title?
The senior is a senior project coordinator, and the other four are project coordinators.
Senior project coordinator? I'm not familiar with that in civil service terms.
They're exempt.
They're exempt positions, okay. And what is the salaries?
I don't know.
What are the salaries? Four positions, $400,000. I'm just curious. Five positions, $400,000, so what are they making?
Well, we're using wages and count and not stepfives, but wages and count, salary, it depends on whether or not you use the 2% because the 2% salary savings rate is figured into our budget. So for a senior project coordinator, including the salary savings of 2%, it's 93,779. And each of the project coordinators are 70,365.
Now, the as-needed employees, what's the breakdown for those?
There's the-- This might be just off one. I think these are still correct. These are as of July 1, 2008. We have five ranges of positions that we utilize for our as-needed, longer-term assistance. We have a chief clerk level, a principal election, chief election clerk, principal election clerk, senior election--
Are you breaking down the salaries as needed for this proposal?
We actually detail the positions we need and--
Where are those?
When we develop the budget. We determine the number of positions, the correct classification. We kind of mimic the civil service--
Where is it? Can I see it?
Yes.
So this 1.277 figure hasn't changed?
I'm sorry?
This 1.2 million figure hasn't changed?
From the beginning, yes, it has. As we made from our original--
So you're going to give me the current breakdown or the last?
The current.
Okay.
No, I have the first one, too. I didn't bring it. Hold on. The 2.2. Yeah. The 2.8, I don't have the 2.2. Well, the 2.8, the only... I'm sorry, I don't have the breakdown by position for the 2.2, but I can get that to you today.
Today? I need it now. Should I just zero this out?
Yeah, but I don't have that. Well, I can modify the vote by mail. Yeah, you can modify it. No, this, you can get me that. We have the 2.8 breakdown, and the only additional cuts from here were the reduction in the vote by mail.
With also the systems reduction in...
And the 150.
So there were no cuts in salaries as needed?
In the vote by mail, yes.
From 2.8 to 2.2, there were no cuts in the salaries as needed?
Vote by mail is a heavily staff-heavy operation. If it's all going. Right now, remember, we're not clear on how much they took. Somewhere between 450 and six. It's in 41.7.
And that's expensive, yeah.
So your original request was more than six times more than it was?
Yes.
You've reduced it down to six times more than it was?
Yes.
It's amazing.
This was at nine o'clock, right?
No, eight-thirty, because Dennis Zine said he made roll call. We are joined by council members Zine and Han. To bring you up to speed, what I'm focused on are the... Okay, the...
What are you talking about?
Let's, here's, I want to share with my colleagues my concern. The original allocation in 2007, 2008 was six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That included eighty-eight thousand, almost eighty-nine thousand of permanent staff. We're looking at this target.
Okay.
The permanent staff is, has been retained. It represents a project coordinator and a senior program coordinator and four program coordinators, and that cost for next year is almost four hundred thousand dollars. That's the three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That is not part of the items that I have questioned. Those were the staff that were originally promised, and we've maintained those, and I have no question about maintaining those. The question I have is if you look at the 2007, 2008 allocation, it totals up to six hundred and thirty-eight. So if you take that, multiply it by two, that's the 1.3 million that we originally thought it was going to cost. The actual costs were a little bit higher than that. The actual costs were seven hundred and forty thousand, almost seven hundred and forty-one thousand. The largest jump, in fact, I believe, no, there were two jumps in that, salaries over time and election expense. Last year, there was no allocation, there was no election, so there was no allocation except for the five positions. Those people have been working largely on municipal elections. My concern is when you look at salaries as needed, move it across, it jumps from one hundred and ninety-eight thousand to 1.3 million, which is a multiplication of more than six. And the number of elections conducted were twenty-two, and they're going to eighty-nine, which is a multiplication of four. So I do not understand, I'm not understanding the math. They keep telling us it's based on experience, but they increased, I mean, based on experience, it should be closer to eight hundred thousand. In the salaries over time, the justification staff has given for the jump in the expenses, the unanticipated expenses, was that it was the first time out, there were some humpy roads in the process. But if you recall, when they presented the report to us on the conduction of the election, they never said that they were going to come back with a budget proposal that was going to be quadruple what was anticipated. And I remind you that the amount requested by the city clerk originally was 4.9 million.
Right.
And I'm not talking about the three hundred and ninety-eight.
Right.
The CIO and the mayor reduced that to four million, but we're still three times higher than the original proposal. So I don't buy it. I do not, I believe that the city clerk is trying to, is trying to build, as I described it, a Cadillac election process in a system that doesn't need a Cadillac election process. In fact, I believe by incorporating more neighborhood council volunteerism into it, we'll get a better election, to get a more community-oriented election instead of a typical government election process. And I'm not saying that we should avoid anything legal, I'm just saying that I don't understand why these neighborhood council elections have become so common. If we had known, by the way, if I had known that you were going to recommend a budget that was 4.9 plus 400,000, so 5.3 million dollars in a system that is less than that, I would have never recommended that this go to the city clerk. Never. Do you understand that? It was based on your commitment to reduce costs that we did it. That's why I'm blown away by this. You know, this is not the intent. We also were very pronounced, the three of us in particular, as the members of this committee but also on the council floor, have been very pronounced in our objective to keep these at a community level. Real people with real elections, but not, you know, highfalutin city clerk legs. In fact, there are many laws that apply to us that do not apply to these councils with regard to the Brown Act and, I mean, the laws apply, but the way that we implement them are different. Is that correct?
Gwen Pointexter City Attorney's Office, well, most, many of the laws, in fact, do apply to neighborhood councils, such as Brown Act, conflict of interest, ethics rules...
These are advisory.
Absolutely, they're advisory, but nonetheless, they're an advisory body of the city, so we still do have city rules that apply, and part of the reason why the city clerk took over the elections, because notwithstanding the community involvement, many of the elections were chaotic, quite frankly, to use just plain non-legal terms, and we needed a process where we could have some continuity, some transparency, and most important to the city's system, fairness. And that's why the city clerk is here today. And the difficulty with the neighborhood council elections is because their internal systems are complex. They have anywhere between thirteen and fifty board members, different seats that can be run and voted upon by different people, and different sets of bylaws, all of which the city clerk right now is trying to grapple with with our assistance. We've been working on changing eighty-nine bylaws through a stipulation package, which has actually, quite frankly, been very labor-intensive. So I understand your concerns, but from a legal concern, I agree with the city clerk that we need to have funds that are going to be appropriate to run an election so they will not be challenged and that we can prevail in the end. We had, even with 22 elections, we did have nine challenges, and they were resolved, but that took time as well. So we're trying to keep a system intact that will minimize the number of challenges that would occur with the city.
We have neighborhood councils throughout the city. We have neighborhood groups, homeowners organizations, that have no direct connection with the city of Los Angeles. They seem to run very smooth without this process, without the funding. They've run extremely well in the communities. Somehow, we get involved in it, it becomes extremely expensive when we don't have any money, becomes very complex and complicated, and then we throw our hands up and say, we don't have the funds to fund it, and the community says, well, we need this, that, and the other. But Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, I'm sure Janice has some in her district, where she has some in his district, I've got some, they run very smooth without our interference, our participation, and they advise us when they believe there's an issue that affects us. Most of the time, they do their thing. There's no city attorney involvement, there's no city involvement, and they run extremely smooth and have good attendance from the community members. Compared to what we're trying to do at an incredible expense, we don't have the funds to appropriate. That's what really frustrates me, and at the charter commission, we never envisioned it would be this complicated.
Honestly, my neighborhood councils don't have these kind of problems.
Yeah.
None of them. They're all running smoothly.
Honorable committee, I would put forward that...
Now, it seems to me that you've taken the worst example, and you've tried to consider every possibility based on that worst example, and then multiplied it across the system when ninety percent of the neighborhood councils are not having these kinds of electioneering issues.
Well, again, I feel like I have to jump in here because I was probably the first one to suggest that the city clerk take over the neighborhood council elections because, you know, I had spent a good couple of years as chair of this committee, and, you know, Gwen's right, I mean, we had a lot of chaos, and it was preventing neighborhood councils from doing the work that they do so well, which is improving their neighborhood and making improvements and communicating with stakeholders, and it really was preventing them. And Dunn, frankly, had come to us and said, you know, they were spending the majority of their staff time on elections, and they felt like they weren't able to do what they wanted to do. So it was actually my suggestion, gee, the city clerk knows how to run elections, why don't we let the city clerk run these elections? And the 912 Commission agreed with that, but I think what council member Alarcon said, you know, but we asked, you know, what would this cost us if we did give it to the city clerk? So I do think we were basing a lot of it on that original estimate of what it would cost. And frankly, you, you know, the reason we admire the city clerk's office is that you do run Cadillac operations, which is most of the time what we want in municipal elections. We want them to be the finest, the best, and I think you were just applying your same principles of municipal electioneering to, you know, neighborhood council. And I guess what we're saying is we think there should be a hybrid. You know, yes, we want your expertise, we want your overall umbrella in running these elections, but I think to cut these costs down, we want you to partner on a different level with the neighborhood council volunteer pool, which is the greatest pool of volunteers in this city, has even really surpassed homeowners organizations in a major way. There's people that are now involved in city government that were never involved before, and we've got people who really do want to improve their neighborhood. So I think that's what Richard's probably trying to get to the bottom, drill down on this budget, is, you know, how do we continue to have your expertise of the umbrella of the city clerk's office running these elections? How do we take it down a couple of notches in terms of the expense? And can we do that with the volunteer pool? And I thought it was interesting, Richard last, when was that? Was that Friday? Gosh, seems like a long time ago. He basically asked everybody that day in the room, how many of you would be interested not only in volunteering your own neighborhood council, but is this something that you would consider doing citywide, helping other? And almost everybody raised their hand, which I thought spoke to me of the true spirit of neighborhood councils. It is about their own neighborhoods, but it is really about everybody else's neighborhood too, and collectively coming together in this great army and making the city a better place. So I'm still hoping that, you know, we can get this hybrid version and be able to fund what you need in a way that keeps these at a grassroots level, which is different. We've never done this before, and I can see, you know, the city clerk has never done this before in this type of a way. But neighborhood councils are kind of a new chartered course for Los Angeles, and frankly, we're never going to go back to the old way when we didn't have them. So we can complain all we want about they're not exactly what we thought they were going to be, but here they are. I think they're bigger and better and more powerful than they've ever been, but this is a little bump in the road. The elections, you know, are something that we have to get through so that they can do their work.
We have to make a decision.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, you had at one time expense for equipment of 115,000. That money's been expended, that's for long-term equipment, I'm assuming, because there's no allocation in this year's budget?
Where is that?
In your...
Expense equipment.
In 2007, 2008, you expended 115,000.
Oh, oh, there.
In equipment, you're not making any purchases of equipment this year.
Well, that's tied in with expense. I'd have to actually go back and see what that was. But we generally don't buy equipment items. We lease most of our things because we're an on-again, off-again operation.
Okay, so you didn't even touch that money. So the expenditures for election expense and the increase in election expense and overtime was largely absorbed by the equipment expense that you didn't incur?
Well, I think that money got wrapped in together with the election expense money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the 115,000 was, represents the allocation that was approved by the council in December 2007, so it's possible that during the course of the year, the actual expenditure, that that was actually wrapped into the 268, but at the time the council took its action, it actually put it into the city clerk's expense and contractual services account, and the balance of the money went into the election expense accounts. So...
Yeah, there was an increase of 100,000 on overtime for regular staff.
And there were probably interim adjustments that occurred to align what the actions the council took with their actual need once they conducted the elections.
But again, none of this was reported in the aftermath of the elections. None of this is in the report.
I don't recall it's in the report, that's why I've asked staff to provide us a copy because I honestly do not recall what's in that report.
I don't remember any discussion about the budget at all in that report. So I assumed that the 1.3 million was adequate.
Yeah, I don't remember that either, but...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer an idea.
Good.
Based upon Ms. Han's comments, which I appreciate very much, the largest expense that we have put aside is for salaries as needed and salaries over time. If you were to allocate these funds to us, we could work aggressively with Dunn to see if we could develop a semi-professional cadre of volunteers. And what we would do is keep your staffs apprised, if it were a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis, whatever it took. If the volunteer cadre works out to our satisfaction and to Dunn's satisfaction, that will end up in less dollars being spent on our side, and those dollars will revert to the general fund. If however the volunteer cadre idea does not pan out, we still have at least the funding to proceed with the election as directed by the council. We would maintain complete transparency. We would be happy to report to you on a weekly or bi-weekly basis or to any council office on how that is going. But that would be, I would propose, a fail-safe method where we could proceed with the elections, but in every good faith, reach out to use the volunteer cadre.
My first recommendation would be to reduce the 1.27 million to 800,000, which would be a reflection of the clear multiplication of the number of elections conducted and the number of elections that need to be conducted. So that would be my first. The original allocation, well, the original allocation was much higher than this.
Right.
But the staff has come back with an allocation of 1.2... But the staff has come back with an allocation of 1.277 million. And I'm suggesting that 800,000 would be appropriate for that. In terms of salaries overtime, the bump to, from 81,000 to 457,000, because it wasn't, there was no description of that in the report, I have really no understanding of why that increased to 185,000, or more than double what we had allocated. But 81,000, you know, 457,000 reflects about four and a half times the original, no, I'm sorry, five and a half times the original allocation. Again, we're only multiplying by four here. So my recommendation is that, yeah, I'm struggling with this. I mean, I recognize that, but this money here, in the salaries overtime, that reflects current city clerk staff assigned to municipal elections that have to help supplement this. And we're already hiring some, I don't know how many, because I haven't got the staffing pattern for this recommendation. I'm still waiting for that.
Yeah, I know, it was confusing last time.
I still haven't got the staffing pattern.
The staffing, we're in the spreadsheet where we have it by section.
This here? This?
The bigger packet.
Yeah.
And there's a by-section breakdown by account, and then within the...
You're gonna have to show us what you're talking about.
No.
This is Friday.
Okay, here we go, okay. Neighborhood council election, oh, this is, this is equipment. It's interesting, you've got equipment on here, but...
Do you have what I had? Where? If I had what I wrote.
Here's their overtime account, here's their 1070. So here, remember, Friday I was talking about the five...
I was having enough.
This is the overtime for both the term staff and the as-needed staff. And so...
So the total is 62,000, 63,000.
For this particular unit. This is the neighborhood council.
Right, right.
And then here's the service counter, that's the warehouse operator.
So these are existing staff members, and their overtime? Is this overtime?
Excuse me, can you just borrow a mic while you're doing that? Maybe borrow a mic to record.
What are we looking at?
And then this is, this is the as-needed...
Show me how to do one.
I only want...
No, this was, he had asked for a detail of the staffing. Right, and so we only had the copies, we have our reference, so...
Workshop.
So this is basically how we build up our budget. We start from scratch each year, determine what work needs to be done, lay out a timetable, and then determine the staffing we need to accomplish the work that's been done.
So if we delayed the election by four months, all this would be saved?
You'd have to shift the whole thing four months.
I got that, but this would all be saved?
Yes.
This would all be saved?
Right.
80,000, 80,000, 80,000, 80,000. This is as-needed salaries?
Yes.
So right here, if we move this election to four months, we could save 320 just in as-needed salaries.
In one unit.
Then that would explain them, okay. And the same in all these categories. I had asked for that calculation. Do you have it?
I think in our report...
Last Friday, I asked for a calculation of what would be saved if we moved the election four months. Do I have that calculation?
No, no, you don't, sir.
When we talk about four months, what does that move us to?
The city clerk couldn't do it.
The city clerk would not be doing it because...
We could not do it, because we're preparing for our municipal elections.
Okay, what month are we talking about when we say four months?
I think he's talking about moving it from, into the, to the 2010, '11 fiscal year.
I don't know.
July to October?
Yeah.
Are you talking about, when are the elections?
The elections are scheduled for March through June.
Of next year?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're talking about four months?
July to October.
Okay.
And I think our response on Friday was that we couldn't, because we would be working on the municipal election.
Which would be...
In March and May of the following year.
But you would have all this additional staff dedicated to it.
But there's still only the 25 of us to direct their work, and we would have to focus on the municipal election.
Would be delayed it two months.
Same. Candidate filing begins in November, so a lot of work has to be done before that can start.
What if we delayed it two months? What's the question?
Not four months, but two months.
No, it's still a problem for us. We...
I'm not asking if it's a problem, we're asking what would happen.
Then, I think it could still potentially jeopardize the municipal election, because we really need to focus on making sure that everything's, everything that needs to happen does happen. And most of our activities are sequential, so we need to start in July. We actually start earlier, but...
And you would have thought everything would have been happened by July for neighborhood councils, which would be over.
There's gonna be, the only activities left for the neighborhood councils will be any challenges that we still have to report back on. That will swap into July. Because there's a month after you conduct the elections, where you're doing the canvas, and then there's an opportunity for people to challenge the election, we have to investigate and report back.
I mean, I'm trying to understand, because I know, again, you have Yeoman's work in the city clerk's office, but again, I think, you know, part of, you know, again, we never really heard that when we were talking, as you said. I mean, it was always like, if we didn't hold it in the same year as municipal elections, then we were okay. And now we're starting to hear, well, you can't hold, you know, you can't be involved six months into...
No, no, that's still the case. That is the fiscal year. Councilwoman? July 1 starts the fiscal year of the 2000...
Okay, let me, let me make a suggestion here. Let me make a suggestion here.
I don't think you can use that word. You just said...
No, it's fiscal year.
Let me make a suggestion. The primary purpose for us to hone in on this was to get the $450,000 into the neighborhood council system that was depleted by a previous action. So the report should reflect that, what I am asking for is to move that we, that we reduce the allocation for salaries as needed to 800,000 from 1.27 million. That would generate a savings of 477,000.
Which would...
And I ask that we also, I would also, as part of the motion, ask that we move 450,000 back into the neighborhood councils to make them whole at 45,000 each. I have serious questions about these overtime recommendations here, as well as the expenses. Rather than deal with those at this time, I would like to ask the department to come back with a full report. Let's see, what month is this? This is May? So I would say by August. Where we may make other suggestions, I think these costs are extremely high, extremely high. But for the purposes of moving forward with a budget, I think we can't really, I can't drill down. I'm not getting the kind of information. What I would like to do is analyze the previous report submitted by the city clerk and extrapolate any information that's relative to budgetary issues, which I don't believe there was much at all. And secondly, I really want to hone in on the salaries overtime and election expense. So my motion is that for the time being, for the purposes of the budget, we eliminate 477,000 out of the city clerk's election, reflecting a reduction from 1.27, 1,277,089 in their salaries as needed account. These are for one-time expenses for neighborhood council elections, lowering that to 800,000. And then transferring 450,000 into the neighborhood council, neighborhood councils to get them to the $45,000 figure.
What do you do with the extra 27,000?
That should just go to the unallocated balance. Oh, I'm sorry, I understand budget and finances asked for a report back in July. So we would ask the city clerk for a complete report, and I want to drill, I want to know every single position. I want to know exactly where this money is going. And I want to know particularly the salaries overtime and election expenses. The election expenses, actually, I don't have as much a problem with. I think there's going to be expenses. I just want to know what those are. But the salaries overtime, growing from 81,000 projected, and then 100,000 increase in last, in the conduction of that election. There should have been something learned in that process, and it shouldn't have to be replicated. But 457,000, this is not, this is not a Christmas tree for existing staff to get overtime. We gave you five additional positions out of the system, and we took it out of, to cover your butts on the municipal elections. And you didn't respect that. That was, that was money that you were going to have to find elsewhere. And you asked me, your department asked me, to enable you to use those during the municipal elections, because you had a shortage elsewhere. You're placing that burden on the neighborhood council system. And all this time that they are standing here should have been spent out there doing neighborhood council work. But I really, it really angers me that we gave you five additional positions for the municipal election process, and you still come back and ask for more. So I'm not done with this. And in July, I want a complete, I don't want somebody scrambling and don't even have copies to hand out to my colleagues about critical information about this decision. You're getting a pass only because it's the day the budget is going to be voted on.
Mr. Chairman, the most efficient way to get your recommendation before the council today, which is taking up the proposed budget, is to have CLA staff prepare a motion for you for consideration by, when we do the committee report before the full council.
How can it reflect this committee?
Because today, we're taking up the full budget, which contains the UB appropriations and the adjustments that the committee report has in it already.
Can we make it a motion of the committee? We can make it a motion of the committee, can't we?
Well, you can, you can have the members sign it, but it would be a motion from you.
I can't have the members sign it under the Brown Act. But can I have, or can I, if I announce it? What can I do?
Well, I would, we would, I would suggest that you have a motion prepared to be considered by the council today on, when they hear the budget.
Well, wait a minute. If I do that, then they can't join me.
Well, they can join you in the force, sir, when you, when that motion's introduced. You can say you had a committee...
I'm not getting my grip. I want this, I want to have the full force of the committee behind the motion. So if I announce that the committee will introduce a motion, is that sufficient?
Well, you, when you...
I'm asking the city attorney.
I don't know the council rules for that. We'd have to check with the city attorney that's advised at the full council.
Can I ask, as a part of this too, June, I still like the idea of you creating this, you know, volunteer army, but it sounded like there was a little training involved in that. And so, of course, your suggestion was, you keep that money, and if it works out, you give it back. If it doesn't work out, you keep it. So how, now, considering what we're doing, does that impact this idea of creating this, which I really think we need to move forward with as part of this report, on this idea of a volunteer elections army of volunteers from neighborhood councils?
Well, quite frankly, I would have liked to have been able to retain the 1.27 as insurance with any dollars that we don't use going back.
Sounds like we're going to do it the other way around.
I understand. I'll just have to discuss this with staff, and we will get back to you on that.
Because we want to, I mean, I really want Dunn, I want Bong Wong, and us to work with you on that idea, because I think that's the only way this is going to work for you, is to have this. But unfortunately, in the beginning, it will take a little staff training, sounds like, for these volunteers.
I do hear what you're saying.
But I think it's key, and once we really kind of get that in place, I think that as we go forward will be extremely important. So I don't want to lose that piece of what...
It's an experiment. It definitely is. And it all depends if our experience shows that the, that the volunteers do in fact show up, and that they do in fact, you know, produce the effect that we want them to.
So could that be a part of this report back on this proposed plan on election volunteers?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Because I think that's key.
Absolutely. And I would like to incorporate that in the motion. Did you, did you hear that one, Daryl?
Did we hear it?
He was having a conversation, but, okay, that is, the fourth element of the motion was to have the department report back on creating a volunteer corps in the community to assist with the elections.
Yeah, right.
I have a comment on that. Our municipal elections, who manages the municipal elections?
We do.
You do? And who do you use for those?
We use community volunteers, but there's a great deal of difference in the conduct of municipal elections from these neighborhood council elections. There's, when we do the municipal elections, the poll workers get one ballot that goes to every person who walks in that door.
Right.
For the neighborhood councils, a person walks in, you don't know which combination of potentially 30 different ballots you're going to give that person, until you can determine their eligibility based on their stakeholder status. So it's different.
Is there a way to modify that to make it simpler?
If they change their bylaws?
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to impose this on the volunteers for the regular municipal elections. They may never volunteer again.
We have a hard enough time.
Well, this should be simpler than...
But the neighborhood council systems are stakeholders, they're committed to this system, they want to make it work, they want to make it grow, and I believe they would be committed volunteers. Also, they are in a different position analytically to be able to assess problems as they emerge, very different than typical poll workers, where one person has trouble shooting authority. Here, I think, you know, sometimes you have to delve a little deeper than our municipal election poll workers do.
But there are volunteers on both sides of the fence, that's my issue.
When's the next neighborhood council all-day conference? Of what? May? What a great idea. It seems to me there should be one entire session on this idea.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the city clerk is...
But I'd like to move forward, we have a bunch of cards, and we have to get down to work on the budget.
It's like, that's a good place to...
So the motion is that we instruct the CLA to draft a motion on behalf of the committee that will be introduced at the budget hearing today, that would reduce the allocation to the city clerk by 477,000, increase the neighborhood council funding to 450,000, place the rest in the unallocated balance, and then ask for a report back from the city clerk in July on the, on the budget for the next year's elections. We're not changing, we're not making a recommendation on the, extending the election, but we may, I want to hold that on the table till July's report, but also to report back on the volunteer, the potential for volunteerism to be expanded in the election process as we move forward. Those were the four items. Was there anything I missed?
No, that's good.
Okay, Janice Hahn, second.
Before you act, could you just take public comment first?
Oh, yes.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
And mind your vote.
Okay, let's move on with the public comment. Linda Lux, if we could have one minute, please, so we can get back to...
Thank you for your, for trying to strike a balance, a good balance between the volunteer army, which, who are going to be your volunteer army, I can promise you that, who are also first responders in things like earthquakes, which we're very aware of now. But I appreciate your effort to strike a fair balance, and I know it's going to be difficult, but I, speaking as a president of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, I know the neighborhood councils will rise to the occasion and do what's necessary. So, and I thank you for, in your motion, including adding more money for the neighborhood councils to ensure the 45,000. That's really important to us. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Linda.
Deale Gibson? Dale Gibson, after Dale, we have Cindy Cleggorn.
Well, um, thank you for having me, I'm very excited, this is, this has been great to watch. And, and good for you, I wrote this down, because I've got so many things going on here. The blow that these departments are showing does not reflect these economic times, as you said. We, the neighborhood council board members are, and stakeholders are just citizens, and we thank you for helping us keep our voice. One of the thoughts, as you said, we can work with these folks, and no, we can make a way, I, maybe we can even make it with a stakeholder election, so they don't need extra people, but thank you very much, and we'd love to work with you.
Thank you. After Cindy, we have Ms. Royal.
I'm Cindy Cleggorn from Sunland to Hunga, I also served on the Neighborhood Council Review Commission, thank you very, very much for, for working through this, and so strongly. I just wanted a few comments, at the, at the NCRC meetings, I just want to say again, the city clerk's role was, because they have an established structure, they're used to doing elections, so the, the point was, is that things are already in place there, they also already engage volunteers, so therefore, the, the things that got the most challenges, such as the counting of votes and the onsite electioneering, and the candidate filing forms and stakeholder forms, those would all be, the procedure is there. All of us vote in different precincts and different areas where we have different ballots. My mother has a different ballot than I do, so there's already structure out there for these different ballots, so I really think that it was to be minimized, and the structure was already there, and to utilize staff in off-years, and to be the least costly, and yes, to engage the volunteers, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nina Royal, Vice President...
We have Sean Simons next?
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Nina Royal, Vice President of Outreach for the Sunland to Hunga Neighborhood Council, and I agree with everything that Cindy said, I believe that, I'm sorry, we should take our elections back, I think that it's too costly for the city to be doing it, I think that we are more trustworthy than that, I'm sure you're going to have some problems here and there, out of 89, maybe possibly 90 in the future neighborhood councils, put their minimal. So I encourage you to please take this expense out of here, give it back to us, we do it better, we do it cheaper.
Let me, let me point out that I am not unwilling to consider that, but it depends largely on the report in July. Thank you.
Okay. We do have people that are trained to handle the election...
We would have to change the budget, we'd have to talk to Dunn about expanding their resources, somebody's got to conduct these elections.
Save us money, no matter how you look at it, we save us money.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I understand the logic in the transfer, because there is a mechanism in place, but I think that the bells and whistles of the mechanism is much more than what the neighborhood councils need. You pointed out many times the Cadillac, I think that, at this point in the neighborhood council's development, having a Cadillac, even in the best fiscal year, wouldn't make sense, it would be like buying one for a 120-year-old woman who drives once a year. A number of our seats are currently vacant, and we can't fill them, a number of positions in the election, they, a number of them across the city, they run uncontested. I think that, like, for instance, the polling recruitment you're talking about, it's far cheaper to write a memo to us to say, we need three examples of a polling place, rather than have a full-time staff member to go out and do the recruitment. I work in low-budget production, I, I'm a production manager. You couldn't have Michael Bay's production manager come and work in my area. I appreciate this idea of a hybrid, but I think still that it could start early. For this report that you're asking for in July, I think having neighborhood councils help to weigh in on it, to go through line by line, to help them realize what is not necessary, what we don't need.
Thank you very much. Sean Simons, and then Dr. Clyde Williams. Is Sean Simons there? Oh, that was you?
I can do it again.
Oh, I, I thought there was another, is Dr. Clyde Williams there? You know, he was first, I apologize to him, I'll see him in council, I'm sure, so I'll apologize to him in person. In any case, um, now we, we take a vote on, on the measure we force. Councilmember Han, seconds, well? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All members approved, so that will go forthwith to the council, and, so, what is the specific action today, or when we go into council, the motion will be prepared, or?
Yes. Staff will proceed to have a motion drafted for consideration by council today during its consideration of the proposed budget.
Okay, so what I do want to stress is that, while, while this committee has approved this, as chair of the committee, I am not very satisfied with this budget process relative to this, and my staff did review the report, there's no mention of any budgetary issues in the report. So I don't believe the city clerk's office has been forthright with this committee, and I take that as a disrespect. June, this is not on your watch, okay, so I'm not talking to you, this is an opportunity for you to develop respect between the city clerk's office and this committee, or redevelop, I should say, because we always had a good relationship. So, in July, I am expecting a full, detailed report, I expect the city clerk to work with Dunn, because of Bong Wong, we have to, we have to reconsider the entire notion, I think it's unconscionable, that out of a system of, what's the total budget in the neighborhood council system, not counting elections? I think it's about, I want to say five or six million. Mr. Kim, is that?
I thought it was three, what is it, four?
It is 3.2...
3.2? Okay, so seven million, it's unconscionable to me that we would spend almost 50, no, almost 50% on election process for that system. I don't think that was ever the intent. This is a community program in many respects, these are advisory positions.
Right, I really want to encourage Bong Wong to really get, you know, with the city clerk's office, because it's in your best interest that this works.
By the way, I do, I do believe that a hybrid...
You didn't want to do the elections, and you made that very clear to us.
I do believe, I do believe in the hybrid model that was described by Ms. Han.
You know, make it work, you know, I need, I really need you to be at that table, okay?
Great. With that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Okay.